Four, three, two.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is the Monday, October seventeen, twenty twenty second regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, if you could all take a second and silence our phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, Mr. Hatfield, please go through the roll call.
Absolutely. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rousch.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is present. Treasurer Lauderbach. Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Frazee.
Here.
Everyone's all accounted for.
Fantastic. Full board tonight. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have item two point one, approval of the minutes from September nineteen, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Item two point two is a list of staff that have announced their resignation as well as effective dates. Item two point three is approval of payment of the school systems bills for the months of July and August twenty twenty-two, as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of eighteen million. I'm sorry, I can't read that. Eighteen million, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. Item two point four is approval to authorize legal payments for the listed professional legal fees.
I move adoption of the consent agenda items two point one through two point four.
I support. Motion by Mr. Lauderbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding items two point one through two point four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have item three, shining stars. Mike.
Kelly Scott, how are you here? Kelly, you get to join me in staying here for an awkward moment, okay, as I read about you. Kelly is one of our shining stars this month. Kelly's MPS journey began in two thousand and fifteen, once she started her employment as a paraprofessional at Plymouth Elementary. In two thousand and eighteen, Kelly returned to MPS and joined the staff at Carpenter Pre-Primary Center. Kelly is currently a kindergarten teacher at Plymouth Elementary. Kelly received her bachelor's degree from SVSU and went on to earn her master's degree from the University of Michigan Dearborn. Kelly was nominated for a shining star by MPS parent. Here are the comments. Beginning with meet the teacher night, Ms. Scott has created a welcoming learning environment for our son and his classmates. Ms. Scott explained to parents the value of learning classroom and school routines. Developing relationships with classmates and mindfulness exercises helps students understand their feelings and manage them. Additionally, Ms. Scott understands parents' needs in addition to her students. I truly appreciate knowing that Ms. Scott truly loves and cares for our students just as much as we do as parents. Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you.
And our second shining star, Jillian would join me up here for that awkward moment. Jillian joined the MPS team in two thousand and ten as a workstation tech in the information technology department, then worked at Dow High as a registrar, moved to payroll specialist, and currently is the manager of payroll, benefits, and people accounting. Jillian attended Pensacola Junior College before earning her degree from DeVry University. Jillian was nominated for a shining star by MPS colleagues. Among the comments were the following. During my first time working with our summer school program, Jillian was not only my shining star, guiding me through the dark, but my lighthouse and kept me from sinking in unfamiliar waters. She gives excellent customer service to MPS staff, always kind and giving her time. Jillian made the summer school payroll process so easy and made sure to train anyone using the form that then initiated changes based on feedback from users. Jillian made herself available for questions and was quick to respond with help. She is a top-notch and great attribute to MPS team. Congratulations, Jillian.
All right, next up, we have a school safety presentation for item three point two. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I appreciate the chance to have this discussion tonight. I know school safety's been on the minds of many of our community members, and it's one of those topics that unfortunately is getting all too much attention in the media. But we do consider ourselves very fortunate here at MPS with all of the resources that we have available to us to help us in planning what is our version of school safety response and planning for the district. So the goal tonight is to try to move through these slides fairly quickly, but to take the opportunity to tie together all of the different things that we can do here in Midland and how we've taken advantage of some of our community resources as well to, you know, make our schools as safe as they can be. So with that, I'm going to move through here quickly. And this first one, I would just point out that obviously it's no secret that incidents of school violence have unfortunately increased over the last ten to fifteen years. Seems like every year we are hearing about a violent incident in one of our schools across the nation. Sometimes it hits very close to home, you know, and so as evidenced by last school year. We certainly recognize that there's not a perfect solution to, you know, this proactive thinking that we are trying to do as a district. You know, even considering when you talk to experts in this area, FBI, Homeland Security, Michigan State Police, all recognize that these trends are growing and, you know, the concerns really spill over into all these other areas. It surprised me to learn over the last four years in this position how much time our local law enforcement spends thinking about this topic as well. And our emergency managers here in Midland, we are fortunate that we have a very connected community, and so I feel like we've had some good partnerships with them. But sometimes in schools, we think that we're a bit of an island, you know, when it comes to these things, and it's just our responsibility during the school year, during the school day. But the truth is, all of these other agencies in Midland have really spent a lot of time thinking about incidents of school violence too. And I know there are some other things that can tie in possibly. I know there's consideration about how does bullying impact school violence in some of these cases where there have been shootings in schools. Often, when they do the, you know, the deep dive into the investigation, they find that kids maybe had a troubling past, there were some red flags, they had been outcasts or picked on, you know. All these themes tend to repeat. I wouldn't say there's an exact model in every case, but they certainly are themes that we do see occurring. And, you know, the next one here kind of digs into that a little bit further too. Some factors that we don't even realize that might be impacting these incidents. And again, I would point out, not really in our control. These are sometimes community-based problems, sometimes they're family situations. But, you know, there are certainly socioeconomic challenges that affect kids, isolation, you know, social media issues, all kinds of stuff that ties into the emotional development of kids. And so that is going to be one of the themes that certainly I'll touch on. But the presentation right after this, Ms. Sherry is going to kind of do a deep dive into that social-emotional support that we are trying to put together here for kids. And then I think the second bullet here, it's important to point out that, you know, there are certainly many cases, again, in these past incidents of school violence where warning signs may have been missed. And it's sad to think that, you know, possibly some of these tragedies could have been prevented if somebody thought to say something or was a little more quick to bring up a concern. And, you know, it's easy to do the armchair quarterback thing, and that's certainly not the point of law enforcement or FBI when they do those investigations. But those are, again, themes that come up, and we've seen that repeated. So really, I guess the final bullet there is just to make the point that school safety is really a community issue, and it's something that all of us really need to spend time thinking about. You know, that includes all our stakeholders, parents, grandparents, students, their peer group, all the school staff. And as I said, law enforcement and, you know, our community have been excellent to work with as well. So this one, this, I think, is an important slide really to make. I guess most of what I want to talk about in this presentation today is right here. A lot of this is just increasing awareness, it's being vigilant, it's making sure that we have an atmosphere where people are comfortable to bring things forward. You know, certainly, it's difficult for a school official, an administrator, principal, to monitor everything that's happening on every social media site, that's on every Facebook page, and all of these, you know, areas where kids are maybe making some poor choices or, and sometimes it's not kids, frankly, sometimes it's adults. But we're not always hearing about things as quickly as we would like. So the point of this slide is, again, to hit home that vigilance, awareness, and identifying concerns is all of our jobs. And as I said, you know, mentioned previously, that is the one thing that when they go back and investigate further after incidents have occurred, that is the one theme that tends to reoccur in almost all of these cases. So as you go down the list, there are some other things that are going to be talked about a little bit, community resources, ensuring follow-through when there is an incident. And then MPS obviously has had to create their own protocols to follow up with threats and to make sure that there are appropriate referrals when they're needed to mental health agencies, that we involve law enforcement to do, you know, whether it's a safety check or what other, you know, reporting needs might be required for the prosecutor, any of those things where we've had issues, we make sure that we follow this protocol and this process that we've developed over the years to make sure that we're consistent in how we respond. So this slide, though, it isn't, you know, these ideas are not new. Again, these are generally recognized by most experts as the important items that we have to be thinking about as we plan for school safety. So digging into that a little further, it's a multi-pronged approach, really, and we have done our best to try to follow through and make sure that our planning and response touches on this multi-pronged approach idea. The first piece we talk about often, I know Mr. Shero's talked quite a bit about, and I knew he used the phrase hardened targets, obviously, that's a piece of it. Secure buildings is a key component, camera systems. We have resource officers. We're very fortunate, the community has, you know, supported that initiative years ago, and we've been able to continue to do that. You know, in a perfect world, you'd have a SRO in every school, that's just not reality. So we make the best of the four that we have, and we try to spread them out and make sure they're allocated to all of our buildings. Coming soon, I know recently Evolve scanners have been sort of the talk, at least here in our district, about one of the new initiatives that we're going to put in place. A few other things that maybe aren't as well-known is that we are working with Midland Police, and they're going to complete for every school, and I think the administration building as well, a full security assessment, which will include a write-up and a report with recommendations about how to make buildings more secure. And we are just beginning conversations with school principals about adding more cameras to all of our schools. And we have a lot of cameras, district-wide. I think we have over three hundred cameras to keep track of what's happening in our buildings and out on the grounds. But with some of the bond work and construction, you know, we've had some areas that are a little harder to see now. So we could easily add another eighty to a hundred cameras, I would imagine, by the time we're done with all this. So we have a vast network. If camera systems are, SROs can view those when they're on-site. You know, we still have a process. If anything ever came of a police officer needing video, though, for some kind of a criminal matter, there's still a process where they must request slash, you know, sort of subpoena that information because it's still school property. Those cameras are school property. But when we have an SRO on-site, they have access to those because otherwise they can't do their jobs on school property to make sure kids are safe on the property. So all of these things are a piece of our physical security response and trying to, again, make buildings difficult targets. Preparedness with staff is a key piece. We do all of our required drills every year. We have worked hard with staff on getting them back up to speed with ALIS. You know, we have kind of acknowledged that during this couple of years of COVID that have gone past, we didn't have the ability to do as many drills and some of the other things that we really needed to, to maintain the focus on that. But this year, we're hitting that hard again. And so any of our new staff that have come on board since ALIS rolled out about four years ago, you know, we touched on it at the orientation with some of those teachers, and then when they went back to their building, they had a chance to see what ALIS protocols look like in their individual schools. But it is one of those things that people just need to practice, and it needs to be almost instinctual if there's ever an incident, how you are going to respond. So ALIS is, as most of you know, it's an acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So all of these components of the acronym are taught sort of in isolation to the staff, and then we, as age-appropriate, we work with kids on how to build their skill a little bit with some of these drills too. And the goal is certainly never to scare the kids, but to do them in an educational way. And again, it's very much age-appropriate, and I've seen how they look in elementary schools versus high schools, and there's a stark difference, for sure. Some things that we are, by legislation, required to do every year, the district has to have emergency operation plans, well, for the district, sort of a master overview, and then you have to have EOPs for each of our school buildings. And again, as I touched on, we do all the required safety drills every year. Communication tools, the traditional things, you know, PA systems in schools, email messaging systems, school messenger, those are used at times. Many buildings have, you know, text lists that they create on their own internally. We also have the Raptor app. Raptor's a software that does two things for us. It does visitor management, where it does background screens for people who come in to volunteer. And it also has a communication feature where you can initiate practice drills with the app, and it pushes it out to every staff member. Or you can actually, in a real-life scenario, you can call the lockdown or an alert for the building. As I mentioned, Evolve scanners are coming soon. Mike had a note in the communique today. So next week, they're going to be installed. I know there's a schedule for the week. Those are going first in secondary buildings, and we're going to get used to using those. Mental health supports, as I mentioned, I know Amanda's really going to do a deep dive in this, but I will touch on just a few things in my presentation in a couple of slides, so I will talk about that. But just to hit back on physical security quickly, part of what we're focused on is fewer entry points. As I mentioned, with Raptor visitor management, reduced foot traffic during school hours. I know that is also sometimes viewed in a negative way. You know, I remember as a student here, I was fortunate to go through Midland schools myself. Just anybody could walk in off the streets, through just about any door in the building, but we don't live in a time where that's acceptable anymore. And so we certainly have tried to reduce foot traffic. But with that said, we still, you know, want to partner with parents and give them opportunities to come in and see, you know, art shows or different displays or things that the kids have going. But we certainly try to be more deliberate about when we schedule those things. They're always, you know, nearer to the end of the day or lunch hour when kids and traffic flows are naturally occurring anyways. We certainly do more to monitor arrival and dismissals. The scanners will be a part of that. Definitely the camera systems that we currently have and then that we'll be adding to are a key piece of it. We've done reinforced doors and windows through bond work, door boots, and then panic and lockdown buttons are in buildings. So again, a fairly comprehensive list for physical security. Just to touch on this one, again, how we really view this as a community effort. So the school safety assessments that I referenced with MPD, truly, that was almost something that just came up over the last month or so. We invited the police to join us as we heard presentation on the Evolve scanners, and we were talking to them at that meeting about the need for kind of a closer look at each of our schools because they're all unique in many ways, the layouts, the different access points, how close they are to parking lots or other things. And Lieutenant Javier mentioned to me that they certainly had officers that were trained to do that. And so it came up somewhat organically, but it's one of the things that we're excited to hear back from them about this. And I know that initially Chief Ford had mentioned they would try to have them all done by the end of the year. So we may have some other recommendations to follow up on. We do meet with them monthly. We rotate through buildings and, you know, whatever school, for example, last month, we were at Midland High School. So we met in the main office with Mrs. Sherman, some of the assistant principals, Lieutenant Javier was there. We do walkthroughs, we talk about concerns that they have unique to their building. And so we're going to do that, actually, this, it's either this week or next, we're at Dow High. And we're going to rotate through all of the schools. So we did start with the high schools, and we're going to work down. But that's been a very positive thing. As I referenced, we cooperate fully with Midland County EMS and emergency manager, Jen Boyer. She and I talk almost monthly as well. So just lots of good partnerships. And I know the superintendent group that Mike is involved with meets with local first responders every month as well. For those who aren't familiar with the required drills, the last bullet there, every year, schools are required by law to do five fire drills. You have to do three lockdown drills and two inclement weather drills. And if, really, the only reason that you're allowed to miss those is if there's a cancellation of school. Otherwise, you need to write in to request a waiver or to change a date if something comes up. So it is something that's fairly strict and that they hold us to. Next one here, again, just, as I said briefly, to touch on some of the social-emotional needs for kids. We all know, I think, it's generally common sense that kids can't learn if their physical needs aren't met. So, you know, they need to be rested and have a good meal and, you know, feel safe in their environment. So those are things that we consider, and we've done a lot of work to try to support kids in many ways. You know, pre-pandemic, during the pandemic, and then now as we are looking ahead to try to get back to, you know, more normal school years going forward. We certainly, though, I think it's important to point out that second line there, how it references the number of support staff we've added as a district. And again, Amanda's going to dig into that. But it's definitely been a benefit to us, some of the dollars that schools have received from the pandemic and, you know, school safety grant funds, all different kinds of things that we've been able to access. And then, as I said, we are going to continue to work on community partnerships where there's expertise outside of our district that can help support kids who are having social or emotional challenges. You know, this one, again, more of the same theme, but communication is key. If we have red flags or things that are concerning going on with kids, we need to know about it. So we do need students and parents to talk to us about things that are happening. And then certainly, any of our principals or administrators are going to take time to work on this. But we're trying to grow the skill set of our teachers and other support staff to be better at identifying concerns and helping kids who are struggling to get through these tougher times. So all of that is really, the goal, of course, is then, you know, with supports from home, from school, outside agencies, and, you know, just being involved in their community, kids tend to do best when they have all these outside connections to support them. It's, you know, a lot of the work that the Legacy Center focuses on, for example, building assets of kids. And so I think we all do that to some degree. Schools take a big piece of it, and certainly the family and the parent decisions to get them involved in things is a key component, too. But this is how we end up with healthy kids. You know, you give them opportunities and try to increase their involvements and hope that they grow and flourish from that. So again, I guess just to summarize, we are trying to look at all these different pieces. We're trying to look at physical security, we're trying to look at these mental health concerns, and we're just trying to make sure that we have a staff, you know, our seven hundred-plus staff in the district that these kids see every day, that are prepared if there is ever an emergency or crisis that we have to deal with. And so I apologize to go through that quickly, but I know there's probably some questions, and I wanted to make sure Amanda has her time too. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I guess, Jeff, one of the things, you know, I think that we've talked, like you and I have talked about it, but the fact that we need the community to, if they see something, say something. What is the best phone call for a community member to make? Is it to the police? Is it to the MPS? Kind of how do you?
The truth is, it works either way, and we've seen it. You know, information come to us in many different forms. We do get okay-to-say tips from the state police reporting. If anything goes into 911, our SROs are usually first to respond, but then because of that connection to schools.
Yep.
We get the information. But yeah, an email probably to an administrator is the best, rather than just a teacher or, you know, just a passing conversation with the staff, you know, outside in the community. Because it, not to say that other staff aren't going to take those things seriously, but for an administrator, it becomes the instant priority for them.
Yep.
And if it's a paraprofessional, maybe, who doesn't think the same way that a principal might think about that, they may say, well, I can tell them in the morning, you know. Not that they wouldn't report it, but it needs to be one of those things that is followed up with immediately. So I would always say the best bet is to reach out to administrator for your school first.
Okay-to-say is the student, for students?
Anybody can report to okay-to-say. It's a state police reporting hotline. And if a tip goes through that program, they actually call or email the principal of the school. And again, there's a, you must respond with what your actions were within twenty-four hours. So again, reports become high priority right away. And frankly, I would say that in most cases, as soon as we get a report, we have a response and usually have students in offices talking to kids about what was reported within often minutes of a report. What typically is the issue is somebody might see something that occurred over a weekend on, you know, social media, and then our principal doesn't hear about it until Wednesday or Thursday. So four days have gone by with no action, and it's not because we didn't care about that issue, it's just because nobody reported it. And so we need everybody's eyes and ears to keep track of those things.
Okay. Jeff, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, and we'll move right into item three point three, social-emotional learning, with Penny Miller Nelson and Amanda Sherry.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share information with you tonight. As Jeff mentioned, and I think Amanda will reaffirm, we take our responsibility very seriously, our responsibility that students feel safe and secure and included and that they belong so that they're ready to learn and be academically successful. Providing these learning experiences and services to support students' social-emotional well-being is really a foundational component to today's educational system. Amanda's going to talk you through that. There is a tremendous body of research that supports this work, and the Michigan Department of Education actually requires us to give attention to students' social-emotional well-being and mental health. Not only have they launched competencies for us to teach students, but they have offered considerable funding to support additional staff and programming in this area, and we are really maximizing that opportunity. So the state puts great focus on it, and I would offer to you, as you already know, that our local community does as well. For years, even before the pandemic, our community has been involved with the Mental Health Coalition. Mike was actually a founding member of that, and we have continued to participate in the school work group. We know that we now have the Well-being Coalition here in town and the Great Lakes Bay Mental Health Partnership. So there's lots of evidence to say that our community cares and are willing to partner with us to provide these services. So again, we appreciate the chance to give you an update about the work that's actually happening in our schools. And I'm happy to introduce you to Amanda Sherry. She serves as our multi-tiered Systems of Support Coordinator and has done a really tremendous job stepping into this role and helping us build out these services and supports for students.
Thank you, Penny. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to all of you today some of the things that we're doing here within Midland Public to support not only our students but also our staff in Midland Public Schools. I'm going to start today, just going back a little bit, to talk a little bit about what multi-tiered system of supports is. You often will hear this referred to as MTSS. I'm sure you've probably seen the triangle before. MTSS and multi-tiered system of supports really is, the Michigan Department of Education, or MDE, defines that as a comprehensive framework comprised of defines that as a comprehensive framework comprised of a collection of research-based strategies designed to meet the individual needs and assets of the whole child at all achievement levels. It intentionally interconnects the education, the health, and the human services systems in support of successful learners, successful schools, and community outcomes. Implementation of MTSS as intended provides educational settings with a framework to organize strategies and processes needed to eliminate barriers to learning and support successful learner outcomes. MTSS is designed to support the whole child in both academic and non-academic content areas. And I'm sure you've heard the term "whole child" before, but this visual just kind of shows that whole child as related to MDE is concerning cognitive, academic, physical, social, emotional, and behavioral. So the visual that you see here, the green area represents what we call Tier One. Tier One is 100% of our students receive Tier One services. That's the universal support that we have in place for all students in our buildings. That's their instruction and their differentiation. It's intended to meet the needs of all learners. This also includes things such as positive behavioral interventions and supports, social emotional learning, building and classroom expectations. The focus of Tier One is truly proactive and preventative. The yellow area within that, you'll see about 15% of our students will require additional support or extension or enrichment. So it can go either way. Either they need additional support or they need to be even more challenged at the Tier Two level. This involves targeted interventions and typically consists of group interventions such as student support specialist services or academic interventions. About 5% of our students will require Tier Three, which is the red area that you'll see in the triangle. Those are intense individual interventions. Those are due to either being highly accelerated or encountering more severe difficulties academically, socially, emotionally, or behaviorally. One of the Michigan Department of Education's primary goals is to support the health, safety, and wellness of all students. MDE indicates a critical way to achieve this goal is through social and emotional learning. Within the MTSS framework that you just saw, and in order to support the whole child, MDE indicates that we must provide instruction and incorporate social emotional learning in our school environment. MDE utilizes information and evidence-based strategies as indicated by the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, also known as CASL. That's how you often hear it referred to. CASL, as you can see, defines, as CL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy towards others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. This slide is really the nuts and bolts of that. There are five competencies that are identified by CASL and those are aligned to the Michigan Department of Education's social and emotional learning competencies as well. Those five competencies are as follows. The first one is self-awareness. This is the ability to accurately recognize and identify one's emotions and their thoughts and their influence on behavior. This includes things such as demonstrating honesty and integrity, having a growth mindset, understanding one's strengths, and having a sense of confidence and optimism. The second competency is self-management. That's really the ability to regulate and manage one's emotions, their thoughts and behaviors effectively in different situations in order to manage their stress, control impulses, motivate oneself, and set and work towards personal and academic goals. Some things in this area are identifying and using stress management strategies to help us be able to access our education. Exhibiting self-discipline and self-motivation. Using planning and organizational skills and taking initiative. The third competency is social awareness, which is the ability to take the perspective of and empathize with others and to recognize family, school, and community resources and supports that are available. Some things included in this area are really recognizing the strengths of others, demonstrating empathy and compassion for others, showing concern for the feelings of others, and understanding and expressing gratitude. The fourth competency is relationship skills. This is the ability to establish and maintain healthy relations, relationships with individuals and groups, communicate clearly, listen actively, and cooperate with others. Some skills in this area are also developing positive relationships, practicing teamwork and collaborative problem solving, resolving our conflicts constructively, resisting negative social pressure, and seeking or offering support and help when needed. The last competency is responsible decision-making. That's the ability to make constructive and respectful choices about personal behavior and social interactions. This involves anticipating and evaluating the consequences of our actions, identifying solutions for personal and social problems, and recognizing how critical thinking skills are useful both inside and outside of school. As you can see, the five competencies that social and emotional learning is comprised of are simply life skills. They are the things that we need and utilize every day to be productive members of our society. They are the things we've always learned in school. It's just that we now have a name and are more specifically teaching them and reinforcing them at the Tier One level with all of our students. This visual that you see with the circles on the side shows the importance of all levels. Classroom, SEL instruction and climate, school-wide practices and policies, and authentic partnerships with families and caregivers. All of those are also aligned with learning opportunities within our community. And as Penny mentioned, our community is truly invested in this work. And I have meetings almost daily with different members of our community and community agencies who are working hard at this. I always think it's important that we talk about the why. Why do we need to have social and emotional learning? I'm going to give a couple quotes here. The Michigan Department of Education states, "SEL competencies help complete the academic process for all youth, infants to school age through graduation. SEL competencies help support a well-rounded education that teaches to the whole child. When caregivers and schools focus on the development of the whole child utilizing SEL competencies to guide instruction and interactions with children and students, academic achievement improves, as well as the skills needed for college and career readiness." I think that's important, right? What are we working towards, college and career readiness? I wanted to point out that this involves the family and the community. We have a responsibility to provide social emotional supports for students as shown by that whole child visual. "SEL advances educational excellence through authentic school-family-community partnerships to establish learning environments and experiences that feature trusting and collaborative relationships, rigorous and meaningful curriculum and instruction, and ongoing evaluation." I hope that you're noticing some of the theme to this is the importance of the connection between school and parents and families and our community. A little bit more information on why SEL is important. Research has shown, there's been a lot of research done in this area, that SEL helps students and adults. It leads to improved academic performance and outcomes. For example, research has shown that, and there's an 11 percentile point gain on standardized achievement tests. It increases positive classroom behavior, improves student attitudes about themselves, others, and school, increases ability to manage stress, decreases emotional stress, lowers drug use. And it's also beneficial for our adults in that teachers who possess social and emotional competencies are more likely to stay in the classroom longer, develop nurturing relationships with our students, serve as behavioral role models for children, and manage their emotions as well. It's really important to note here that students are not able to fully access their academic education unless they're well-regulated. We can't access that if we can't think clearly. Teaching the skills through social and emotional learning improves our students' ability to regulate themselves and therefore leads to increased school success. So what are we doing here at Midland Public Schools? Well, we have utilized our ESSR and 31N funding to support students and staff. And we are continuing to build these structures and approve them every day. You'll see first here on the list is MPS resiliency, which encompasses the RISE model. RISE stands for resiliency in students and educators. We continue to partner with Sarah Owens Consulting in this work. This work focuses on understanding the brain and body's reaction to stress or adversity, resiliency, and implementing trauma-informed practices and responses within the school setting. I want to note here, this doesn't just include students, but it includes our adults' understanding how their body reacts to that stress that they're incurring every day and that secondary trauma that they are also incurring, and provides them with strategies as well. We have also hired eight SEL specialists. We have six at the elementary level and two high school SEL specialists. They provide Tier One support. So they're providing supports that are universal for all students. And really, their focus is more on our adults. Teaching staff about trauma-informed practices to utilize in the classroom, coaching our staff and providing professional learning opportunities. Our elementary social and emotional learning specialists also provide structured reflection for our staff and mindfulness lessons within the classrooms. All of our SEL specialists also work to improve restorative practices. They help students reintegrate into the classroom environment after a suspension or a conflict. They help build our teacher-student relationships. And they respond to student needs in the moment. They are also working to increase understanding and utilization of social and emotional skills at the classroom, building, and district level. We also have student support specialists. We have six of those. They are licensed or limited licensed clinicians. They provide Tier Two and Tier Three supports for students who experience social, emotional, behavioral, or mental health difficulties. They also work in coordination a lot with our local agencies for resources for students and families as needed. While our SSS, we call them our student support specialists, our SSS, while they respond to students' needs and crisis, and they're there to help during those times of crisis. However, if any student were to require continued direct services under their care for mental health support, they must gain consent from the parent. The only time that parent consent is not required is for a student age 14 and older. According to the Mental Health Code, which our student support specialists must follow, it is unlawful for a provider to deny mental health services to a student ages 14 years and older if that student makes a request. Those students are able to receive 12 sessions or four months of services. However, I want you to know that our providers believe it is best practice that we involve our parents as much as possible. So they continue to engage with that student and encourage at those sessions to involve that parent or guardian along the way. However, at the end of 12 sessions or four months, whichever occurs first, if the minor does not agree to parent involvement, then those services are discontinued according to the Mental Health Code. Just an interesting tidbit that I think is pretty cool. In the 21-22 school year, we had five full-time student support specialists and one that started in March. So six now, but we had just started one in March of last year. And in last year, they provided 2,713 mental health therapy sessions to our students who were struggling. Okay, we also have focused efforts on prevention. Some of those things are through restorative practices, trauma-informed practices, mindfulness lessons that are offered at the elementary and the pre-primary center. We're working really hard to get sensory pathways in all of our buildings to help our students. We're also working at the Tier One level to have safe spaces in all of our classrooms with the, at least at the elementary level. And we're also working on staff well-being through things such as structured reflection, the Resource and Wellness Center, if you haven't seen that, that's at Midland High, and connection activities. Whenever we get together as a group with our staff, we're really working on having, you know, mindful moments and realizing where we are when we come into our meetings. Some more things that we have in place are partnerships. We have partnerships with the Legacy Center, Midland Area Wellbeing Coalition, Community Mental Health, and the Rock. We partner with them for staff development for not only our teachers but also our paraprofessionals, as well as our SSS and our school social workers and et cetera. We also have a partnership with Discover U for SEL at the secondary level. We continue to work on embedding SEL in its alignment with our PYP approaches to learning. We have Mindful Me mindfulness lessons that comes through an MSU extension that's available to all second-grade classrooms. This, I think, is pretty exciting, too. We have grief groups that are offered at all of our buildings in partnership with the Children's Grief Center. And this year, we're engaging in Trails, which is transforming research into action to improve the lives of students. That comes from MDE, it's supported by MDE from U of M. It's to provide training in cognitive behavioral therapy strategies, mindfulness, and suicide risk management. That training is offered to our counselors, our school social workers, and our student support specialists, so the people that are on the ground with those individuals all the time. In conclusion, I just want to end with social and emotional learning is just a label or a name for skills for success to achieve post-secondary attainment, to support academic progress and ability, for employability skills, critical thinking skills, goal-setting, belonging, and coping skills. They're the skills we utilize every single day to be successful and productive members of our community. Thank you so much for your time. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Maybe not a question, but a comment. I mean, first of all, thank you. I thought the presentation was great. I also thought it was really important and I appreciate you bringing up the why.
Yeah.
And it really is focused on academic achievement. And an 11-point improvement in academic achievement when we have the whole student centered in a classroom is extremely important. The other, maybe comment quickly, is I think it was really important, too, what you said about, you know, this is really establishing a connection between the school environment, our parents, and our community.
Yes.
And I really appreciate your points about how the parent is engaged the whole way. You know, just in my experience with kids in schools, it's, I've really appreciated how much outreach we've gotten from the SEL support specialist and what are we talking about this week? How do you talk to your child about it? And how do you talk to your child about various things that they're experiencing that we can't reproduce in the home? Right? And I think, you know, I can't recreate the experience of 19 other kids in a classroom and I can't create the experience of my son engaging with a student that has autism. But in both instances, you know, the SEL support specialist has reached out to us as parents and provided us information about how to talk to our son about the student with autism that comes into classroom. And it's been really comforting knowing as a parent that people are reaching out to me to make sure that I'm engaged in that, in that process. So, thank you.
That's fantastic. Yeah, really, one of our goals is to have transparency, right? And to be a resource for parents and families as well. And when we can all work together, we can help our kids so much more.
I would comment, Amanda, thank you for sharing all this. I know people wonder what we're doing and they see acronyms and you read so many, about so many different programs. And I have to say, I've heard of all this, but when I see it all put together here tonight, it's very impressive and it makes me proud of all that we're doing to help students, teachers, families, our community, so that we can all be successful together. So thank you.
Okay, Amanda, thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work. All right, that will move us into, excuse me. That'll move us into section number four, Request to Address the Board. And we will kick off this evening with Mr. Buchek. You drop some. Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Hello.
Hello. Appreciate the discussions. My name is Matt Buchek. Couple things. First thing is, is that I would have to say a growing majority is more and more suspicious of SCL as things go forward. The presentation was nice, had a lot of pretty words. There was absolutely zero detail. We don't know what's going on still. So we're concerned, we're watching. All good ideas, but they don't tell us anything yet. I would like to know, when are we able to evaluate the program for ourselves? And if there are not certain specific things that we can measure, the parents will find things to measure. And you probably won't agree with them. Okay, that being said, I, in general, very much appreciate the response to the recent reports involving firearms, whether it be a toy gun or verbal threats. However, unfortunately, the incidents in August and October were reported days after the events took place. Appreciate the discussion that was made earlier about that. Obviously, that's concerning because no fault to the school, but what you don't know, you don't know, right? With regards to the most recent event, the principal at Northeast on Thursday, October 6, was, sent out a memo that a teacher was notified and then administration about an incident that took place three days prior on Monday, October 3. One 13-year-old student threatened other students on a bus. It was unclear, but the statement from MPS and Midland PD tell us that the threat involved a firearm. The Midland PD said they found a weapon, and the police said they, and I quote, "believe the student did not have access to a firearm," end quote. From the information shared publicly, you have to infer that the threat was verbal and that the student came from a home where firearms were absent or they were secured. So the police were called on 10/6, three days after a 13-year-old allegedly used words to threaten students on the bus. Others were able to corroborate the threat, which I appreciate. Three days after the words were used, police searched the student's belongings at the school, arrested the 13-year-old, and put the student into our juvenile butterfly camp. I'm just, I'm not saying I approve of what the student did. I'm just trying to put you guys in the position of that family or that student. Even the Midland prosecutor released a statement telling the community how serious, how serious they take threats. He did not say that this threat was necessarily serious. Of course, we don't know. The general consensus was that this was the right move, and I hope it was. However, I do have a couple thoughts. Were the words used in self-defense? Was the story collaborated? The story was collaborated by others, but was the student being bullied by the group? Why would anybody make a threat like that, right? I mean, it's hard for reasonable people to think that. So was it because they're being bullied? Certainly, there was no gun. It was reported three days later. Okay, I'll end there.
Thank you.
To get the point.
Kelly Scott. Right, I know that. I thought she also had something to address the board about. Wayne, is your last, is it H-O-E-K? E-K or C-K? I'm sorry. How do you spell your last name, sir?
H-O-C-K.
H-O-C-K. Wayne, the floor is yours. Thank you for joining us tonight.
This was news to me.
Did you also sign in just because you were wanting to sit and watch?
Oh, I thought I had to sign in.
No, no, it's okay. Tony, I assume, same situation?
Yeah, I kind of want to say something.
Well, please.
It's probably premature, but, um...
I'm...
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I guess what I'm, I'm thinking forward to if proposals get passed and what may happen. And a proposal that I'm concerned about is Proposal 3, which would allow abortion and much more than that. And I'm just hoping that all parents are aware that this proposal could take away parental rights. So that, let's say, if a child wants to come to a teacher or go to a counselor or one of these people that the lady was discussing, because, say, they want to transition from a male to a female, or they want to get an abortion, this proposal, if it does go through, parents are going to lose their rights. So I guess I'm thinking ahead and trying to be proactive. And I'm standing up here because I'm hoping parents that may be watching this that aren't here will be aware of what Proposal 3 is about and to investigate it further. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Renita Bonadie. Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. This is my ninth month to speak, so I'm not new to the board, 15th month to attend these meetings. I, along with many others, have tried to shed some light on a variety of topics, including bylaw abuses, Freedom of Information Act, Open Meeting Act, personal health choices, lack of transparency of this board and superintendent, and the agendas being pushed by you and your community business partners. It has been quite a journey as I dug into the education system that exists in this district and all the way up to the State Board of Education. I was very disappointed and disgusted to find how the education system, I thought, was teaching our kids about the basics to become healthy and knowledgeable graduates has instead become a system to destroy and abuse these children on many levels. I would say that the individuals on this board probably ran for these positions with the best of intentions and with the children in mind. It seems that something must change the focus of elected officials once they become part of the system. Whether it is the money and influence of the community business partners or the money that flows through the ways that it did during the plandemic, the outcome is not very encouraging. But I would like to thank all of you for your time in the recent transparency. The agenda to put one group of students and ideology above all other students has become quite clear. There is really only one group that has received excessive spending, their own coordinator and advocate, and plenty of resources across the board. School is to be for the betterment and education of all students, not just those that fit a certain narrative and agenda. When will the schools get back to teaching the basics? The amount of time, energy, and money I have heard about over these past months make it very clear that only a couple of groups matter most. The rest are to just stay in their lane, be quiet, and let you collect the education dollars because they attend MPS. It always seems to be about the money. It is for these reasons that I fully support the parents that are standing up to take the three positions on the school board, Mindy, Sarah, and Jimmy. It's time for the others to step aside. Finally, I have a scripture about the children, and I believe relevant to those who have taken an oath to protect the children. Whoever receives one such child in my name receives me. But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone fastened around his neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea. Matthew 18:5. And a reminder for all of us, the fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge, but fools despise wisdom and instruction. Proverbs 1:7. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, is it P-L-A-V-E-R?
Correct.
Hi, Deb. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. This is first to the silent board on this side. Hi, my name is Deb Plaver, and I am here for three reasons: to highlight that if Michigan Proposal 3 passes and becomes part of our constitution, minors will be able to pursue both gender transition and abortion not only without parental knowledge or consent, but also without any interference. And secondly, to highlight that social acceptance and anatomical changes do not necessarily reduce the confusion and likelihood of suicide. And lastly, to ask that MPS focus solely on academics, leaving gender confusion for parents and mental health professionals to work through. A study in San Francisco where transgender identities are widely accepted found similar mental health problems among transgender people. 32% reported that they had attempted suicide. In a 2020 Pediatrics article, those who received puberty blockers were worse on mental health outcome measures than for those who did not. They were also twice as likely to have had a suicide attempt resulting in hospitalization in the last 12 months. Reanalysis of a 2019 Swedish study found that hospitalizations after suicide attempts were nearly twice as high in the surgery group as in the NADA surgery group. So in other words, so-called affirming medical interventions, including hormone therapy and surgery, have not been shown to reduce the risk of suicide for those who identify as transgender. With the widespread media attention to LGBTQ, we are sowing confusion. In the United Kingdom, since 2009, government services are dealing with a 400% increase in children under six dealing with gender identity issues and a 2,000% increase for those under 18. However, the encouraging data point is 75% to 95% of children after passing through puberty who had expressed confusion about gender outgrew it. Two statements from a detransitioned woman summarize the misinformation of transgenderism. Quote, "I was introduced to a belief system that if you don't fit in, then that is a sign that you're trans. If you don't like your body, then that's a sign that you're trans. And if you transition, all these problems will be fixed." And another quote, "I had a ton of issues, I had a ton of issues with my academics and my mental health, but I never really got help with that. As soon as I said I was trans, it was all hands on deck." So in conclusion, I restate my hope that MPS district employees, apart from legal constraints caused by the passing of Proposal 3, will never encourage or support gender transition for minors, especially without parental knowledge and consent. And the focus of MPS for all students will remain on academics alone, for that is the path with the best potential for achievement and stability in life. Counseling and identity issues should remain a discussion between the parents, child, and their doctor. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lane. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I came here today, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to address you. I was a very involved parent in my children's education, and they were very blessed to attend school here from kindergarten to graduation. And I'm so grateful for that. I just wanted to express that. My children were groomed. They were groomed by wonderful teachers to love literacy, to express themselves in written word beautifully. They are confident with their math skills. They are wonderful people who are, who were groomed really to be compassionate, caring, and productive members of their communities. And I'm very grateful to the school system for that. I am also very grateful to this school system for the opportunities I had as a parent to be involved in the school. I did everything from read with students in the classroom to baking cookies. I raised over $30,000 for the chemics at one point, for the music department, selling chemic cards. And all of those opportunities were just wonderful, and I have very fond memories for them. So I was very concerned recently to find out that there's a chapter in this community of a national group that is implying that somehow parental involvement needs to be fought for. It is not. Those opportunities are still there. They exist. They are abundant. And parents can be involved in a variety of ways. So I questioned to myself why this would be something that this group would want to promote and falsely contend. So I thought, too, also about curriculum and wondered if it was more of that that they were concerned about. But I know that this board and the professionals in the school system work hard in picking curriculums that are written by well over hundreds of people and professionals in their fields, educators. They're followed up on, they're field-tested. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for grooming my children. Thank you for helping them to be successful members of our community today. And they're on their way doing much more and getting advanced degrees. So we're very, very grateful in our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa McGaw.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi there. Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name's Lisa McGaw. I have a slightly different reason to be here this evening, but I wanted to take the opportunity that I have to give some well-deserved attention to some dedicated student athletes. On Saturday, this past Saturday, the Dow High boys tennis team's incredible hard work paid off. They were rewarded by bringing home a Division II state team tennis title. The state title was the result of immense commitment, hundreds of hours spent on the court by all 16 varsity players, and true leadership by Dow High's own teacher and coach, Terry Schwarzkopf. This incredibly diverse, and I may argue likely the most diverse group of athletes on any team in the district, deserves to be celebrated. They deserve to be recognized, and they deserve to be proud. As a parent of one of the players, it was very surprising to me to open today's communique, the superintendent communique. While there were numerous highlights about Midland High's homecoming, parent committees, safety updates recognizing a National Merit Scholar, and staff announcements, there was no mention of the tennis team's accomplishment. Perhaps the short turnaround time from a win on Saturday to a communique on Monday was the reason for the omission. I would like to think that. A quick look in my emails brought me to March of last year, when on Saturday, the 12th, our Dow High School hockey team experienced similar exciting results, earning a state title in D3 hockey. Should be celebrated. Two days later, in Monday's March 14th communique, the top of the communique immediately after the vision statement were the well-deserved congratulations, team photo, large print, kudos to the team. I totally agree. Buried and easily missed in today's communique, there was a prerecorded video with some player and coach interviews from the week prior. There was no video title. There was no header. There was no caption. There was no description. It was nice to watch and hear some of the players talk about their hopes for a state title. But there was absolutely no mention anywhere, no celebration of the success these boys experienced this past weekend. They represent Dow High School on and off the court with incredible character. In addition to the team title, four players on the team won individual state championships in their flight. That means they are the best high school singles and doubles players in the state of Michigan. Certainly worthy of a mention in our weekly newsletter from the superintendent. I hope this wasn't oversight. I hope it wasn't error. I could make some assumptions, but I've tried not to. Either way, it is incredibly disappointing. So instead, I'll use this opportunity, if you may allow me just a couple extra moments, to give them the recognition they deserve. Congratulations to every single Dow High player and Coach Schwarzkopf. You are noticed. We applaud you for your hard work, your dedication to your academics, your teamwork, camaraderie, and incredible sportsmanship and humbleness. What an incredible season. We are so proud of you.
Thank you. Joe Bonadie.
Hello. I need to do a little cleanup on some issues. First, congratulations, Phil. I recall the meeting where the board nominated you to be on the Michigan Association of School Boards, but I don't recall it ever being mentioned here that your nomination was accepted. You revealed this at the League of Women Voters event. I would like to remind you that the MASB has not distanced itself from the National School Board Association like 25 other states after the fiasco of calling parents speaking out at school board meetings domestic terrorists. at school board meetings domestic terrorists. Might not be the best fishing ground for best practices, but good luck. And two, thank you to John Lauterbach at that same candidate event. There had been a lot of discussion about transparency. John provided a description of the board being the eyes and ears of the community and that we needed to stay in our lane. Well, you're batting 500, as you certainly stay in your lane, and your bylaw encourages you to get painted in a very narrow lane. Not having access to subcommittees where the decisions made by the administrators get their preliminary rubber stamp means most things are cloaked behind the public perspective. Half the meetings and less public comment time gives less chance to hear the public, and if you did not look at your computers and smile so much, we might actually think you were listening. You make it clear that this is your meeting and the public are spectators. To illustrate, my wife, Renita, did a FOIA request for all communications for anything containing her first or last name. The response was to return only those messages from my wife to the board or superintendent. However, it omitted a message from the superintendent to a citizen, a third party, which was copied to the full board. The message contained the following sentence. "I can speak for myself. Mrs. Bonnades has lied and shared false information multiple times." Yes, her name was spelled correctly. I mentioned this communication at the February board meeting. However, the April FOIA to both Kyle and later Mr. Bruton twice said, "We gave you everything. This was a test after you were trying to charge $14,000 on a FOIA request for several months of communication early in 2022. If you are seeing a few less FOIA requests, it's because we have no faith you would give us anything incriminating like defamation of character." And we did notice that you stopped labeling FOIA requests. They're now just letters on the agenda. I will return the remainder of my time to the superintendent's defense system. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, I love Midland. This is a special community. But I'm concerned about the direction of the school, especially K through five. Oops, I forgot one of my... I forgot my bra. About a month ago, my wife and I were watching an episode of The Adventures of Superman. And after the introduction was over, she said, "We've all been indoctrinated." So I brought this. At the end, you'll see George Reeves in his leotards with his Superman and a giant flag in the back, blowing in the wind. In the close, "Truth, justice, and the American way." And what I've learned is that truth's pretty hard to find anymore. You've got to dig for it. So I've been evaluating my time in the Midland school system, and I want to give recognition to Lloyd Osborne in eighth and ninth grade. Now, in eighth and ninth grade, you don't have a lot of knowledge or experience in life as a student, but he had knowledge and experience, and he passed on to me. And I'm going to tell you what I believe. He didn't lower standards for equity. He raised standards for excellence. Thank you, Lloyd Osborne, for not cheating me out of that experience. He gave me the chance to figure things out, not to spoon-feed me. Keith Carey, Midland High School, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And this was... I wrote about Keith. I played for him. He was a mentor. Both of these men are men of excellence, and... Oh, I only got a minute before... I wrote, "We practiced to win while he was building men." I came along at a time when family mattered and there was connection. So I want to touch on my father. When I was young, started dating, he said, "Your responsibility is to get that girl home safe." And then he... When I got a little older, he said, "Your job, you were born male, you're a man, your job is to protect your mother and your two sisters. That's your job as a man." These are the... This is a quote from my father. "These are the women who have been assigned to you." What I'm suggesting for the board, I'm going to hit on something very controversial. It's biological males in biological females bathrooms, locker rooms, and playing fields. You say, and I'm going to hear, "It's the law." Well, there was a time when slavery was the law, when women couldn't vote, and then there was prohibition. Were they right, or did they have to be changed? And for biological males to be in the bathrooms of biological females...
Thank you.
Locker rooms and athletic fields? It may be the law.
Okay, at this time, we're going to pause the meeting for just a moment. John, John, and myself all have three children playing in the marching band showcase, and Dow High starts in about 20 minutes or so, so I've got to get over there to watch, because I don't think my wife is going to be able to make it to get video of my son and say what these gentlemen hear. So Phil is going to take over the meeting, and we're going to depart, so please excuse us.
Did we miss anybody?
Hi, my name is Suma Jerakuri. Sorry, I have a cold, so it's why I'm wearing my mask today. I'm a physician, an adult psychiatrist. I spoke last month, and I wanted to just touch upon a couple of things. I want to thank everybody for expressing their comments today. I'm glad that we can all do it in a civil manner. I understand if you have to leave, so please go.
We've got public comment.
Okay, okay. No idea. So I do want to say a couple of things, just that, you know, there's a couple of things as an adult psychiatrist, I've seen I assess threat on a daily level. And I mentioned this in the last meeting, last meeting a month ago, just that, you know, at the end of the day, I think we all care about the safety of our kids, and that's so important. I'm finding that that's my biggest concern, more than education. And I'm someone who's very, very empowered by education and what it's done for me. But I have to say, and I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name again, who talked about the safety program, but the thing that you had mentioned was the ideal situation was be if we had a perfect world, a school resource officer would be in every school that we have. I want to... I think our goal is to work towards that, though, and whatever that would mean. I don't know if that's a standard of safety levels, if that would be what would be needed, but, you know, anything we can do. I think if you ask parents in any of these schools where these tragedies have happened, how much money would you have paid? How much money would you have raised in the community to have the proper resources to detect things? And I think the school system is trying. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying to you that, you know, if you could give parents numbers, you know, there's people out there. And these are not common events, but they are commonly occurring in front of our eyes, it feels like. So I think giving that idea of when you said in a perfect world, we would have this. Well, I think if we ask parents, parents do want that, and if you can give us resources of how we can move toward that or what we need to do, whether it be millages, et cetera, I think we want to. And the basis of all of my work and my life as an adult has been towards mental health. So I will tell you, however proposals come down, however people vote, when I see adults who have mental health issues, and trust me, everybody in this room has some form of a mental health issue, and what is defined as a disorder is if it becomes impairing and life interfering. And we all, at some point, will go into that or close to that. But as an adult, when I see adults, I don't see children, but I have advice for people. Children who become adults, tell me, and I know this, being a child who became an adult, nonjudgment, understanding, acceptance, your time, and their validation. However the cookie crumbles, however things come out, those are the things adults will tell me that they needed as kids. So however all these decisions come out, please keep that at the core. Parents, community, everyone.
Thank you.
Although this appears to fall unselectively hearing ears, I will say it anyway. And although perhaps it's quite naive of me to hope that you can change and do the right thing, I'll continue hoping in that direction. I believe everyone here desires for all students to feel safe and free, to be who they believe they currently are. Yet no one has a right to manipulate or coerce a child to question their own identity and upbringing. That's just plain evil. It's difficult enough to know how to treat and interact with those whom we are familiar with, i.e. a male and a female, or an adult and a child, et cetera. We haven't figured that part out yet, and now you want us to remember on which days a boy is now a girl, or a girl is now a boy, or if they are a cat or a dog, or if we are to call them him or her, or they, or one of the other dozens of pronouns. And if we don't, you want to make it punishable. I can tell you now that this plan has already failed. It will continue to fail and will be disastrous to those who believe that they are right in doing this, because one day either common sense will hit them, or the consequences of what they are trying to do will. These poor children are confused enough by the DIE-plus crowd. Yes, I said that the way I wanted it. So these children look to you as the leaders, teachers, administrators, coaches, et cetera. And instead of leading them down a path that will give them a life of true fulfillment and community-mindedness, you're leading them down a path of true destruction, single-mindedness, narrow-mindedness, selfishness, and complete and utter despair, perhaps even death at their own hands. Regardless of gender or age, we are to lift up all people. We are called by our Creator to love Him and to love all He created. That is all of you, all of us, and all of them. There is not one who is greater than the other. Every life created matters. And are you so bold to think that you are greater than God and that you can take away what He created and change it to fit your mold? Heaven forbid that you go there. Our voices may not be heard by you, but they will be heard across the state and across this land. I believe that you can mark today as the beginning of your end of your control of this school board. Mark it as the beginning of the end of evil's reign of terror in schools. Michigan is a land that is surrounded by lighthouses, and I believe we are a light to this nation. What happens in Michigan schools from here on out will likely be the birth of a better school system where truth will dominate. These children and future generations are no longer in your control, nor the control of the MDE, or the NEA, or other leftist organizations. Your agenda has been stamped as void. We will stand up for all children, for all people, and no one will stop us. We have the favor of the Lord God Almighty. Soon there will be three new faces on this board, prayerfully four. When that happens, as it will in many other school districts, the majority of parents can begin to regain confidence in public school systems, perhaps believing once again that their children will be safe and being taught proper education, not propaganda. Repent and turn from these evil ways. You are loved, and there's still time. God bless you, and God bless America.
Are there any other members of the public that wanted to speak?
I'm a banned parent, too, so you need to get out of here pretty soon. My name is Rick Sheehan. Thank God I still have my mother. She gave birth to me in Philadelphia, the cradle of American democracy, the birthplace of liberty. I won't profane either my mom or Philly by artificially conjoining those two at the behest of distant billionaires' agendas. Public schools may be the greatest invention of the United States. The concept that all children, regardless of wealth or status, would, not could, be afforded an education was pretty radical. The fact that, as a nation, we fell down for a long time on the promise of extending it to color, creed, or culture is something we have tried hard to overcome, and it's a process, not an event. Our schools represent the community with its wide range of beliefs and practices as it must, before we flagellate God. For some, this is not enough. Their moral rigidity and intellectual frigidity leads them to believe that only one perspective can be allowed, that only one way of life really allows you to join this community. And as a person who happened to move to this community as a D in the diversity, I felt that sting on multiple occasions. Some folks wanted to pretend that our nation was perfect from its birth, politically and morally superior to everything that came before. That view of, quote, "proper morals," unquote, was what tortured and killed Matthew Shepard on a Wyoming hillside. That view of, quote, "proper morals," unquote, rode in the car with Emmett Till's murderers. That view of, quote, "proper morals," unquote, raped and murdered indigenous children in forced residential schools. That view of, quote, "proper morals," unquote, has led to suicide rates for gay teens double that for straight teens. The only way to really inculcate children with, quote, "proper morals," unquote, is to allow and encourage them to understand perspectives of others, critically evaluating those perspectives, adopting what is good and rejecting what is not. Otherwise, you are promoting a mindset so limiting that the intellectual and moral crippling will be lifelong. Banning books and intimidating the community's teachers is always horrific, and Midland Public Schools has had instances of both in the past to its discredit. But as I said before, it's a process, not an event, and learning from missteps is how we all got to get up upon our own two feet. I hope the Midland Public Schools will continue to stand for learning, openness, and a rejection of the intellectual straitjacket being promoted by some loud voices in this city. Ignorance is malignant.
Okay, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came and spoke tonight. Appreciate the input. All right. Again, I want to say thank you to everybody that came and spoke to us tonight. Appreciate the input. So with that, we'll move into the next section of our meeting, which is item number five, Administrative Services. Leave Mr. Frazee. Do you have minutes? Or we didn't meet since the last... You didn't meet since the last meeting.
It was in the prior meeting. Minutes were in the prior meeting.
Yeah, thank you. So tonight for action is item number 5.1, the Thrun Update to the Fall 2022 Policy Revisions.
Yep. Thrun, our policy provider, provides us two recommended policy updates per year. This recommendation is to further follow-up date, and the revisions are based on federal and state law and government regulation changes to school practices. The Administrative Services Committee has reviewed those policies and are recommending them for your approval.
Okay. Entertain a motion for item 5.1?
I'm moved with approval of Action 5.1, the revisions of the Thrun Fall 2022 Policy.
Support. Moved by Baker, support by Frazee. Any questions? Mike, on the... I was reading, as we were reading through, the only one that I wanted to have the Administrative Services double-check was the Appointment of Officers. It reads a little bit differently than what we've done as a practice in the past, where it's a vote of the board rather than a vote to appoint a committee to select. So you guys, do you mind just double-checking that one?
Policy is correct. It is a vote of the board. The committee only recommends to the board.
Okay. And that, got it.
And that's an MPS practice.
Okay.
So that committee's formed, it's a sub-hoax, it's not in your policy.
So that committee's formed, it's a sub-hox, it's not in your policy, they make a recommendation, but you still by law have to have a vote of the board.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of item 5.1 to approve the Thrun Fall 2022 Policy Revisions? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number six, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Ms. Baker?
Yep, I have the meeting minutes from last month, on September 19th. We met at Dow High School. We started with a social and emotional learning update. Penny Miller Nelson provided an update to the committee on the services available in MPS to support the well-being of students and staff. Next, Benchmark Assessment Goals for 98B. The district has established benchmark assessment goals for the school year in accordance with MDE requirements, and those were shared with the committee. Goal reports will be provided to the committee in February and May. Diversity Equity Inclusion Update. Deandre Hogan shared an overview of the DEI professional development that has been provided to staff this year. MPS has identified the Education, Justice Assessment, and Transformation Tool to assist in developing metrics and goals to work toward recommendations provided by the MPS Equity Audit. And lastly, we had a Special Services and Strand Report. Jessica Brunzel and Anthony Gates provided an overview of the special education services provided throughout the district. They shared the MDE Strand Report and discussed areas of strength and opportunities for growth. The committee then visited classrooms. They adjourned at 2:45, and we met today at Northeast, and those minutes will be shared next month.
Great, thank you. Item 6.2, for information, the 2022-23 Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control. Ms. Miller Nelson?
Yes, the following people have been appointed to the Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control for the 2022-23 school year by the Midland Public Schools Board of Education. Mr. Hatfield serves as the board liaison for this committee. Dr. Midda and Reverend Maite and Service co-chairs. You can see the members listed. It's required that we have a certain constituency of parents and teachers and students. Joe Amobaly is our MPS Administrator Representative. Amy Jaster is a health professional. Craig Rickman is a parent. Scott McNallys is a parent. Michael Donovan is a health teacher, as is Marnie Williams, who is a health teacher and a parent. Matt Wenzel is a Midland High Administrator and parent. Matthew Wenzel, his son, is a student representative. Ayesha Midda is the Dow High School Student Representative, and of course, Mr. Hatfield, as I mentioned.
Thank you. Item number seven is Finance Facilities and Operations. Can I get a copy of the minutes?
Right here. I can, I can take care of you and read those. Is that okay?
You can read it for the record. Yeah, go ahead. Brian can read it.
Yep, not a problem.
With the change of the board members leaving, I think God had them.
No problem. Yep, so the October 3rd, 2022 FFO minutes. Members present were Lotterbach, Blasey, Roche, myself, and Mr. Shero, and Penny Miller Nelson was present as well. The committee reviewed July and August financials. Variances from year to year were highlighted. July and August see a large amount of open purchase orders annually due to fiscal year startup operations. They discussed equipment awards. Administration will recommend at tonight's board meeting diving board and pool equipment, and baseball and softball scoreboards at Dow High School. Staff stipend models and student fee relief was discussed. Administration presented models aligned to the board request for examination of staff stipends and student fee relief, and applicable motions will be integrated into this evening's meeting. Discussed facility planning. Administration presented draft bond revenue and timeline projections provided by the district's financial consultants. A facility walkthrough with the district's architect and construction manager will commence later this fall. And then finally, the committee discussed property and casualty insurance renewal, and administration will recommend renewing coverage with SETSEG at this evening's meeting. This is the second renewal of the policy. The committee's next scheduled meeting is Monday, November the 7th, at 5 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Item 7.2, for action, scoreboard purchases. Brian?
Thank you. Quotes were solicited, and a tabulation is provided in your board packet for a baseball and a softball scoreboard at HH Dow High School. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order for two scoreboards to Dectronics. And please note, and excuse my typo, that period should be a comma, for a grand total of $28,090, or $14,045 each. If approved this evening, both donated and capital improvement funds will be blended together to fund this purchase.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item 7.2.
So moved.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any discussion?
How are we going to handle the rigging and electrical?
Sitting in the bid, Brian?
I believe so, but I would have to verify that with John Streeter, who ascertained that bid from Dectronics.
I'll get back to you on that, but I'm pretty sure it's in the bid.
Yeah. Got it.
You comfortable moving forward with the vote?
Majority of these funds, we were just matching some, came from the boosters, so it was kind of given to us a few calls, so that's.
A big thank you to our booster club. At this time, vote on item 7.2. All those in favor of the $28,090 to Dectronics Incorporated for the two scoreboards, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 7.3, for action, are the diving board replacement and starting platform backplate installation. Mr. Britton?
Thank you. We solicited bids as a district for improvements at the pool that is housed at HH Dow High School. The project in total includes the installation of six new backplates on the existing starting platforms, and the removal and replacement of the diving boards at the facility. We recommend issuing a purchase order to the sole bidder, B&amp;B Pools and Spas of Livonia, for a grand total of $66,000. If approved, capital improvement funds will be utilized for this purchase.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for item 7.3?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any discussion?
This is a shared facility, correct?
Yes.
And our other shared facility is the Midland Community Stadium on the campus of Midland High School, correct?
Yes.
And we have spent significant dollars upgrading that facility, but also along with that, we made sure that it was neutral and equal in nature for both high schools that use the facility, correct?
We tried to, I think.
Yep. Signage arches, everything that we have done, logos on the field.
Yep.
How is this facility different?
I'm not sure on your question, but um.
There's no.
There's nothing in here that we're doing that's of a logo or color, so.
Right, but you're calling this the Herbert Henry Dow Pool.
So Brad, I.
Is this the HH Dow Pool?
So I'm not.
Or is this the Midland Community Pool?
So I'm not calling it that, Brad.
It's what it says in writing in the motion.
Yep, that's what it's been called for, since you were a student.
Right, and since 1968, it's been a shared facility.
So your question would be, to the board, would you like to name that facility something different? I certainly did call it that in my tenure, so I've only.
So I think that it should be called the Midland Community Pool. And I think that, along with that, it should have signage inside that pool that represents both schools equally, and it should be significant in that we spent well over $100,000 at the stadium to have fair representation of both schools. $87,000 for the signage arches, well over $30,000 for the logos in the middle of the field. I think that we, as a school district, should.
There's no debate, there's no debate here.
Should be spending some money.
If you'd like to bring that through your Facilities Committee and up until the board to take full action, I think that's the route that what those things have occurred, so I certainly don't drive that piece of that.
Okay, but we're, and just as the meeting we were in earlier today, going through all our facilities, that, making sure that, just like the community stadium, how we invested the funds in that to make sure that both sides of town felt at home playing in that facility, I don't think it's the same with the pool.
So again, let's bring it forward through the FFO. I have no debate on that. I have no.
But my issue is that we're.
Recommendation, I have no biases on that.
In this motion, and it came about after our meeting today, when I really looked at this and thought about it, and it says the HH Dow Pool, Brian even named it, or announced it differently to say the pool housed at HH Dow High School. So I just have a concern with that, that I think that, I think we should be spending dollars to make, similarly to how we spent dollars at the Midland Community Stadium. Granted, hopefully, at some point in time, Dow High has a stadium just like Midland Community Stadium, but that's going to take a whole lot of money to get to that point. But I don't foresee, as conversations we've had at FFO and things during my tenure at the board, it's going to be really difficult to build another pool. So this is going to keep going in this direction, that this is the only pool that we have for this for a long time, and I think that it needs to be treated like the Midland Community Stadium.
I don't think, think anybody's objecting to you. I think, are you okay if we bring it back to our next FFO meeting and?
Well, that's where it should go. It's got to come through your facility plan, because if you're going to spend money, you have to have the money behind it in facility plans. FFO to the full board, and I'm certainly the most neutral one in the room, because I don't have any dog in this fight, that hasn't made any history in this fight, so.
Then the other point that I wanted to make is, we are in the process of updating scoreboards, and that facility is in need of a new scoreboard. Granted, we're spending $66,000 here, we need to spend another $70,000 on the scoreboard. At the pool. At the pool.
So why do you say it's in the upgrade of that? Because I think our facilities folks would not agree yet at this point. So it was looked at, I don't recall, replaced, certainly within the last decade, and the controllers get replaced as they go forward, and so Dectronics, I think, still thought it had some life to it getting there, but still had some life to it, so.
Not for the pool, that's a different.
Okay, I thought, I misunderstood then.
No, just the pool.
Oh, yeah, no.
The pool needs a new score, scoring system and scoreboard, and the video board that goes along with that, that absolutely needs to be addressed. I know that, so do these others, which we're taking, we're fixing softball and baseball, I'm sure they're old and long in the tooth and need to be replaced, but I believe there's issues with swimming that, on a functionality level.
Yeah, no, that wasn't found to be true. So we had a review, and then it was, the pads and controllers needed to repair, and a software upgrade, and they did that. So Dectronics still says that it has a few years' life, but you can certainly look at it again through facility. So when that issue came forward, it was a repair and a software update, which Dave's guys did the software update on it, so it's functional.
And I'm assuming, Brian, that these have to be replaced for safety, safety upgrade issues, when you're talking about diving boards and platforms and what I'm looking at.
So that was more, that was more me that went over and reviewed with facilities, and the diving board has some structural issues into the ground, not there yet, gone yet, and the original boards from '68, and so they're in a pretty rough shape. The, the starting blocks were more, they were purchased five or six years ago, so they were not out of date, but they are, there's a modern piece of equipment on them that gives the swimmers a better push. So think of a starting block that has a block, where instead of a flat form, they're now allowed to have this block piece in the backside of it. Like, a long time, some of my kids have been out swimming, but Brian still is, but the blocks are more common. So this is in addition to add to the, to the starting blocks, to bring them up to competitive level, but the boards were in really rough shape, so. We tried to get more bidders, we worked on it for months, but there's, you know, everyone had plenty of work, there's very few pool companies that do that work, and we ended up with the one.
Any other discussion? So take note of, Brad, your request to review at FFO, the items that you addressed around the community pool and the scoreboard, so we'll note those. But right now, we'll vote on item 7.3, which is the diving board replacement and starting platform backplate installation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 7.4, for action, IBAP testing fees.
Thank you. The FFO Committee has recommended that the district assumes all costs associated with students taking international baccalaureate and advanced placement assessments in the spring of 2023. If permissible, ESSER funds will support the cost of implementation. General funds will be utilized as an alternate source if that's necessary.
Entertain a motion for item 7.4?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any discussion?
What's the history of the fees, Brian?
It's been 10 years since my daughter took these.
So we originally had grant funds to be able to cover those, and as the grant began to go away, probably Bob Cooper was in the curriculum seats then, he began to develop the plan on, some would be paid, some were partially paid, and over time, that continues to morph when the grant funds are completely gone. We do cover full IB diploma candidates, but the others were not. And so with the ESSER funds and some of the other funds that have come to us, we think we can do this. And the wording we put in there very specifically say it's a.
For the spring of '23.
For the spring of '23 only, and we can review it from then going forward. That gives you the option to continue to look and see where your financial status is before you commit to that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.5 is for action, property and casualty insurance renewal. Mr. Britton?
Administration recommends renewing our property and casualty insurance coverage with SETSEG of East Lansing, Michigan, for a total of $284,668. Of note, that is $134 less than what the invoice is, but that is due to dropping coverage of the now-demodged State Street building, and at the very end of the packet attached with your agenda, it notes that deduction. This is a one-year policy, it expires on November the 1st of '23. This is the second renewal of the policy, and full details were provided with your board packet.
Entertain a motion for item 7.5?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
What kind of percent increase? Any idea, Brian?
19.1%.
So as we researched that, Brad, we were probably underinsured in previous policies. There was a template that was used in the last time we bid, and some of the square foot issues were off, as well as probably the total value of the.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point five is for action, property and casualty insurance renewal. Mr. Britain.
Administration recommends renewing our property and casualty insurance coverage with SETSEG of East Lansing, Michigan, for a total of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Of note, that is one hundred and thirty-four dollars less than what the invoice is, but that is due to dropping coverage of the now demoed State Street building. And at the very end of the packet attached with your agenda, it notes that deduction. This is a one-year policy. It expires on November the first of twenty-three. This is the second renewal of the policy, and full details were provided with your board packet.
Entertain a motion for item seven point five.
Support.
Any discussion?
What kind of percent increase? Any idea, Brian?
Nineteen point one percent.
So as we researched that, Brad, we were probably underinsured in previous policies. There was a template that was used in the last time we bid, and some of the square foot issues were off, as well as probably the total value of the buildings. And so when we, we saw a bit of an increase there, it really was added insurance or added value that was to it. But we, I think it is our intent to bid them again next year. Every two or three years we bid it?
We typically do every three to five, so this is the second renewal, so through FFO, we'll bring that up and see if we want to bid next year or the following. It's been a three to five year cycle.
But they did an appraisal, a walk-through this time of all the buildings. And so when we got it back and we questioned it, you could see where our old ones did not have some of the added square footage.
I'd recommend a re-quote for twenty twenty-three. Just a comment.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring it again through FFO. That was our intent.
Yep.
So your, your recommendation would be to approve this one and then re-quote. Got it?
Yep.
Okay, same page. So vote on item seven point five for approval of the property and casualty insurance renewal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point six for action, staff stipend. Brian?
Thank you. The FFO committee has recommended that administration take action to provide each Midland Public Schools employee with a one-time off-schedule wage increase per the schedule that was attached to the Board of Education agenda. The increase may be elected to be received by the employee as either a payroll addition or as a contribution to a retirement plan. And if approved, general funds will be utilized for the stipends.
Entertain a motion for item seven point six.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any discussion?
I think it's wonderful that we can support our staff this way.
This goes to all the unions, correct?
This goes to every employee, everyone.
Different amounts, a little bit by salary level, but yes, every employee.
Down to the pair of pros and everybody, right?
Yep, yes, sir.
All employee groups, yep. Any further questions or discussion points?
Nope.
All in favor of item seven point six, the staff stipend, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item seven point seven for action, universal breakfast.
Thank you. The FFO committee has recommended that the administration takes measures to enact universal free breakfast for all Midland Public Schools students as soon as staffing levels and MDE permissions afford for the implementation. This action is intended for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year only. If permissible, food service funds will support the cost of implementation. General funds will be utilized as an alternate source only if needed.
And clarification on that last part, that Brian has seeked approval and has not heard back yet on if food service can be used.
We're fairly confident that approval will come.
Say that again, one more time for the, that you'll get approval for.
Waiting approval, confident it will be, but he left that last statement in there to protect for if it is not. Because those have to be approved by MDE because they're USDA.
Tina has to apply on behalf of the district.
USDA funds that have to be used in food service.
Yep.
And then universal breakfast was left out this year, so everyone understands that. That expired with the start of this school year.
I guess the pandemic.
With pandemic.
Yeah.
It was state funding, right? They expired.
Well, remember that it does come to state, but it's actually USDA.
It was government, yeah.
The federal by state.
Yep. So with that, I just wanted to give a little bit of background, Penny, and put you on the spot here, just a little bit of, a little bit of the stuff that we covered in our meeting today, because I think the data is important. That, I think that's something that we have to address further by the data that was presented in a, in a meeting earlier today that we talked about. Two of our elementary schools are title schools, so they get breakfast and lunch, every kid in the whole school?
Nope, only Central Park qualifies for that. The name of it, Brian, go ahead.
Well, Plymouth. Excuse me. Yeah, thanks, Penny. Plymouth now does qualify as well too. And it's called the CEP or Community Eligibility Provision. Is that accurate, Penny? Yeah, they qualify for that. They do currently have free breakfast because their poverty levels are high enough to be CEP qualified.
Okay, so we have those two schools, but then we saw statistics today, Lynn was there as well, that we also have an issue, and the numbers don't lie in that we have poverty levels that people are processing paperwork for their elementary school children to make sure that they get their free and reduced lunch. Magically, that's a big number in elementary school, like you say, a fifty percent number. And as they graduate from middle school, the number goes down to thirty, and high schools, twenty or less. Nothing changed. They just are embarrassed or they don't want to fill out the paperwork because of the socioeconomic challenge of that situation. So I think that through our social, emotional well-being, part of that has to be food. And I think that we need to look further at what we can do as part of that SEL, social, emotional well-being. Mr. Jaster even mentioned that as part of his. It was also mentioned when we were going through the other slides. And I think that, I guess the easiest way to say it is our cafeteria transparency has to be equal to the classroom.
So the food, there's a lot of ways to get at the food service component of it. Certainly part of it is taking away stigma of a free meal. So through the electronic way that we register kids, it used to be a day you'd go through and it was pretty easy for other kids to identify that you were getting a free meal. And now it's just a code that you punch in that no one notices. It'd be the only cafeteria worker that knows it. So that helps a little bit with the stigma of that. The other component, we know and have, are continuing to work on, that breakfast in the classroom tends to get a higher participation rate than breakfast going to the cafeteria. And so we've done that at times and modeled in different places at times, but we'll continue to push into our buildings. I would say our staff doesn't like it as much, but it's certainly, I might, I've spent my whole career trying, Brian knows this because he's had to work for me for twenty years of trying to get breakfast in the classrooms because the more kids we eat in the morning. And that really is one of the most vital meals, as you know, when you talk about social emotional, it's getting that day started with a nutrition, nutritional meal, so. And that helps as well, Brad, on that getting into the classroom. So availability, make it easy, grab and go breakfasts. There's a lot of methods to that. Tina's pretty creative in trying to find a lot of different ways of getting more kids to eat those meals. The other one is just simply filling out the form going forward. We're going to have to work on that, and our, our staff knows that. But we do pretty well at the elementary because principals really get after it. The secondary is a little harder to do, but.
Yep. I think that's something that goes across multiple groups, whether it's CIA, FFO, it's all of them. So I think something we really need to look at because I think the rest of the board members need to see some of those numbers that were presented today.
Just, just simply for the community, many people don't believe it, but from in the twenty years that I've been involved, it started our free and reduced at-risk percent was twelve percent. We are now close to thirty-six in twenty years. That's how much the demographics have changed in Midland, and those are the extra challenges we have with our, our children and our families. So it's a constant, constant merry-go-round, really.
Yeah, that, that.
Trying to get parents to sign up their children and for the administration to try to chase them down and for our kids to be well-fed so they can perform.
The data, our intent usually is to bring it to a board presentation at some point. We bring it through the committee and then it comes to the full board. So I think you'll see some of the achievement data that Brad was talking, that showed that poverty rate in there and how it affects that component of it. But it is, it's doubled since I've been here, and so in a decade, our, our poverty rate has doubled. And a point we made in the meeting was, it's actually probably higher than that number. We just don't get everyone to return the form, and therefore you've got that statistical number, so it's actually probably higher.
And at the same time, Midland Public Schools still performs extremely well considering the challenges that many of our kids have. So that's something to be proud of, and.
Absolutely.
We do, we do very well. We compare ourselves to a number of other districts who have totally different socioeconomics, and we are competitive with them, which says a lot about our staff and our leaders and our families. So when we get criticized for certain things, our demographics are different, but our performance is exceptional. There's always room for improvement, but we can't change the socioeconomics very well.
All right, so thank you. I think it's, it's really important to highlight that if we can eliminate the first barrier in a kid's day of feeling hungry, and that leads to them achieving more in the classroom, then we should do that. And I'm excited about this program, and you know, this is for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year for starters, and hopefully much more to come, and we're going to do everything possible to keep it going. But I still do need a motion. Any motion for seven point seven?
I was hoping you remembered that.
I move to approve item seven point seven, universal breakfast.
Second.
So motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, I saved, I saved this comment for now, but item seven point four, eliminating testing fees, item seven point six, staff stipend, and, and item seven point seven, were addressed the last board meeting where we brought it to the full board's attention about what we discussed in FFO in September, to the full board meeting in September, and really looking at what should the district do with the financial situation we had put ourselves in, where we had some maybe extra fund balance. And two things that we looked at were making sure that we show our staff our appreciation and continuing to try and remove any barriers in a students and families for life that keeps them from achieving. So those are the, the three focus areas for this first discussion, and I thought it was a really healthy discussion as we talked about other potential options to continue to, to provide for equal opportunity to all of our families. And as, as Brad said, I think, you know, item seven point seven in particular did a really good job of trying to eliminate any perceived thing that a family has to overcome to sign up for breakfast, but really focused on eliminating any kid that feels hungry when he or she comes to the classroom, such that they can achieve the academic outcomes that we're looking for, so. With that, move into item seven point eight for action, gifts totaling fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Brian?
Thank you. There are five gifts this evening that require your action for the district to accept. The first is from the Esther and Carl Gerstaker Endowment Fund, that's support for our annual Teacher of the Year awards, for fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, from the Art Rock Endowment Fund, fifteen thousand dollars for staff appreciation, staff appreciation, recruitment and retention initiatives, ten thousand dollars from the Dow High Sports Boosters to help support the scoreboards, Dow High Music Booster Club, ten thousand dollars to support the paved pathway to the turf field, and finally seventy-five hundred dollars from the Dow High Sports Boosters to support general sports equipment.
I will entertain a motion to accept the gifts in item seven point eight.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any further discussion?
I just had a question. Support for paved pathway to turf field. We have a rendering or something that we'll see at some point, or is that just a need that, or it doesn't have a rendering yet?
It was, it was under the bid threshold. We were able to do that under our facilities plan. So it's the band and public access out there. Now that we have the field, we're walking through unsafe conditions. So it came forward to us, and we were able to bid the path from the parking lot to the edge of the field and be under the threshold, and then the booster club would like it to go to the middle of the field.
Yes, sir.
Area, and that's where the boosters picked up that component of it, so that's what you're hearing, so it's a part of them.
You're speaking of the gravel parking lot that's already right next to it, or we're going all the way back?
I'm, I'm probably not accurate on that, Brad, so I'm afraid to answer that question. Mike Mogunberg did it. Do you understand where it's going, Brian?
Well, yeah, it, it's basically extending the current walkway where it stops and turns from, into, from pavement into gravel, and it takes it and extends it to the entrance at the corner of the field. It's right next to where the gateway is.
If you're talking to ground, we're on the back.
Bell tower.
Okay.
And then from there, there's an, I call it an offshoot that will take it and extend it to basically the fifty-yard line, which will allow for the lift to be driven out there, so our band director then can have elevation to be able to run their rehearsals how they would like to do it. Mike Mogunberg does have, I believe, a rendering mic that we could provide for you.
So it's coming out of the paved parking lot, not the gravel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of item seven point eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven point nine for information, gifts totaling twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
As you just mentioned, Phil, there are twenty-four total gifts totaling twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. They range from support for multiple athletic programs, robotics teams, the music program, and many others. As is tradition, all will be honored in the broadcast credits this evening and in correspondence from the Board of Education. We certainly appreciate all the organization's generosity.
Thank you. So that concludes item seven. Now move to item eight, which is human resources. Did we?
That'll be in the next month's.
Yep. Next month's agenda packet will, will include minutes from our last meeting. So for action, the Misespa contract extension. Brian?
Thank you. We're seeking your approval this evening to approve the Misespa contract extension that is included in your board packet. We did have a previous agreement that was set to expire at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We were approached by the organization to enter any talks to extend that contract by a year, and we have come to an agreement that does so. So the highlights of this agreement are that it does extend the current contract to the conclusion of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It includes a mid-year one dollar an hour raise that will take effect this school year. And it then takes the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five salaries and aligns the raise schedule to the exact same formula that we integrated into the teacher's contract. It also includes the identical health insurance coverage, the HSA contributions that we included in last year's teacher contract as well too. So this brings those two groups into almost exact alignment on the salary increase potential for those associations. So we are seeking your approval this evening to solidify this contract extension.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for item eight point one.
Move to approve item eight point one, contract extension.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, support by Baker. Any further discussion?
Clarification on which group this is?
Grounds and maintenance.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Skilled trades and maintenance.
Yeah.
Small group, but.
All good?
All right. All in favor of approval of the Misespa contract extension, item eight point one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Jaster, item eight point two?
Yeah, thank you. The board and staff extend their deepest. Mrs. Miller passed away September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Marilyn had been a bus driver for Midland Schools. She retired in two thousand and six with thirty-five years of service.
Thank you. Item nine are correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item nine point one are for information letters to the, from the Board of Education to the following. to the following individuals or organizations listed in the agenda packet. And then item number 9.2 are for information letters to the Board of Education from the individuals listed in the agenda packet. Item number 10 are scheduled activities for information. 10.1, all meetings are regular and special meetings of the Board of Education and begin at 7:00 PM at the MPS Administration Center, unless otherwise noted. Currently scheduled for November 21st and December 19th to close out 2022. With that, item 11 would be a closed session to, for consideration of attorney-client privileged communications pursuant to Section 8.1, Subsection H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15 dot 268, um, Subsection 1H regarding legal opinion on a pending litigation. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move to, going to closed section, session to discuss the consideration of attorney-client privileges.
Support.
Motion by Frazee, supported by Baker. Before I take a vote, just a note to the public. We will go into the closed session. No decisions are made in closed session. This is a time for us to discuss with our attorney, uh, pending legal matter. All board decisions are made in open meeting only. So when we come out, uh, we will move into item 12, and then adjourn.
Yeah, there is, there will be no action taken after the closed meeting, except for adjournment.
So everybody understand that? We have to clear the room, and then we come back in. We just are going to adjourn. There will be no other items.
You're welcome to stay if you want, but we're.
Yes, if you want to stay and.
Good night.
You got your mics on Phil?
What? Say it again.
He's waiting.
Alright, thank you. So we're now back into open meeting and we'll move to item 12, which is study session discussion. Any board members have any points of clarification or things they wish to discuss?
Nope.
I just want to make a couple comments.
Yeah.
Phil, just the fact that we have sat here for many, many meetings and we're glad to sit here and listen to comments. But it gets to a point where I feel like we're listening to things that people don't have the accurate information. Whether it's curriculum, they tell us that we're, we don't care, that we're bad people. I take offense to that because not one of us is that way. We've all had kids in the district or presently do. And I take a lot of pride in what we do, all of us. And not once, not once has any, have any of these people ever called me to ask me, "This is what I've heard. What are we doing in curriculum? How can parents get involved?" I, I would say my young, my youngest or my oldest started here in 1986. And Sarah graduated 10 years ago. So I was a mom and a volunteer in this district for more years than, than, than I know. And I had many opportunities, as Jennifer said, as a parent, to volunteer in all kinds of ways, on district committees, on school committees, and it led me here. So be careful what you wish for. And it's been a great 21 years. But I will honestly say that I think our curriculum and what we offer to our students now is far more suited to what we need our kids to learn and experience. Whether it's through PYP, whether it's recognizing all the things we do for social, emotional development and learning for our staff, for families. There is just so much being done here. So I want to just give credit to everyone that works with the district. But I also would ask the community, before you get up and you start condemning the things that we do or you think we're hiding things, please talk to one of us. We're going to tell you the truth. We have no reason to, to lie. Why would we even do that? So if you're proud of Midland Public Schools, please find the accurate information. Thanks.
Thanks Lynn. Mike, anything?
No, just off a lens, the information's available too. It's very frustrating. It's usually on our websites and the transparency site. We have numerous communication tools. It is frustrating to never be asked and to have to sit through those kind of comments.
Alright. Take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.